We will now call our February the 10th regular St. Lucie County School Board meeting to order. Welcome to all of you that are here tonight. We are glad to see you all out. We want to also welcome our viewing audience as well. Board members and audience, we have a very wonderful presentation here. We have River Edge Elementary School students and they're going to do a performance this evening, directed by Ms. Amy Martin-Kovik. As usual, I'm going to ask the board members to please go down directly after our pledges, so that we can have a better view. Would you all stand with me for the pledges?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing as we recite our Kids That Hope Treasure Hunters pledge. As an adult and treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talents, skills, and talents that exist in all children and youth. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions.
Good evening Superintendent Yost, school board members, and distinguished guests. We are the 4th and 5th grade chorus from River's Edge Elementary. We are excited to perform for you tonight. We all join this chorus for many reasons, but most of all because we love music.
We love music because it brings peace to our hearts. There are a lot of terrible things happening in this world today, but we believe that we can change the world. We are the future. We want to spread our message of hope to the world through a song, a song of peace.
We have a tradition now, we're gonna ask young people, come on back up here like quick. We have a tradition where we talk to our young people a little bit and give them a chance to express why they are part of the music team here and what does that do for you. So I'm gonna ask like quick, if there's a volunteer tonight? Anyone wanna raise your hand? I don't point at other people. Okay, well, you know, I love the song because the song talks about one voice, right? And peace. And as I look at all of your faces, I truly believe that you're going to be the peacemakers of tomorrow and that we are going to end up being even more greater than we've ever been here in America because of you. As you grow up, you will be the peacemakers of tomorrow. Now you really had a lot to say. You got some more you wanna say?
No, just that I like this song because it shows that you can bring peace to the world and make people happy.
Isn't that wonderful? Anyone else wanna say anything in regards to why you like singing? What's your reason for singing?
It helps you express yourself in music and singing in different ways.
Very good. Okay, listen, we absolutely love that song. Thank you so much for choosing that song. I do believe that you certainly are gonna be the next peacemakers that we need here as a nation so that things will get better, okay? Parents, please stand. I want to recognize you with these lovely children, those of you that came and you supported your kids. We just wanna say thank you for helping us educate your children. Thank you very much. Okay, you may be seated. I'll go now. Thank you. Okay. As they're leaving out, I would like to remind our audience that if any of you desire to be unscheduled speakers, please fill your forms out now and turn them in. You can turn them in directly to Ms. Harrison, which is right to the left of Superintendent Yost. Our vision for St. Lucie County Schools is that in partnership with parents and community, we will become premier centers of knowledge that are organized around students and the work provided to them. Our name will become synonymous with the continuous improvement of student achievement and the success of each individual. Our promise is to move from good to great focusing on our core business and that business being the creation of challenging, engaging, and satisfying work for each child every day. We will now move right into our special order of business. Superintendent Yost.
Yes ma'am. This evening, our first special order of business is a presentation by Dale Casson's Educational Complex and they're being recognized for a contribution from the Board of the Fort Pierce Housing Authority. So if we could ask Principal Ellen Harden to come forward at this time?
Chairperson Mills, school board members, and Superintendent Yost, it is my pleasure to recognize Andrea Kokonowski. I've been practicing that name. I spelled it phonetically so I can try very hard to say that. Andrea has been with us and served our students at Dale Casson's in the role of school improvement team member. She is constantly with us. She is constantly seeking out how she can help our students. She comes bearing gifts for our students in lots of forms. Well, one day she walks in and in her hand is a check for a thousand dollars. And I can't tell you what that means to Dale Casson's students because we are very strong in positive behavior interventions and supports. And with those funds, we are able to support that initiative at our school. And we wanted to recognize Andrea today and give her a big thank you from the students of Dale Casson's.
Andrea is very involved in our community and we thank her and the Housing Authority for that donation. Our second special order of business this evening is the African American History Month Proclamation. Dr. Kevin Perry.
Madam Chair, school board members, Superintendent Yost, a close scrutiny of the Florida Statute 1003.42 requires instruction in the history of African Americans. The teaching of African and African American history and culture incorporates the contributions, culture, and influences of African Americans in shaping the United States and the world. As the Harvard chain historian Carter G. Woodson, along with Reverend Jesse Moreland, founded the Association for the Study of Negro Life in September 1915 to encourage scholars to engage in the intensive study of the Black past. This organization conceived and announced Negro History Week in 1925 and the event was celebrated in 1926. The celebration was expanded to a month in 1976, the nation's bicentennial. President Gerald R. Ford urged Americans to seize the opportunity to honor the too often neglected accomplishments of Black Americans in every area of endeavor. Since that time, every American president has proclaimed February as African American History Month. The St. Lucie County School Board has a rich and storied history in celebrating Black History Month and the teaching of African and African American history. Here to present the proclamation for African American History Month is Ms. Bernadette Floyd, principal for a forested elementary school and the principal of the year for St. Lucie Public Schools. Ms. Floyd?
Good evening. I'm very honored this evening to have this opportunity to read this to the board and to our community. Proclamation for National African American History Month, February 2015. Whereas the St. Lucie County Board of Education takes pride in joining Americans throughout the country in various parts of the world and recognizing February 2015 as a National African American History Month. And whereas African American History Month celebrates the contributions that African Americans have made to American history in their struggles for freedom and equality and deepens our understanding of our nation's history. And whereas National African American History Month had its origins in 1915 and was initiated in 1926 by Dr. Carter G. Woodson as Black History Week during the month of February, as it coincided with the birthdays of Abraham Lincoln and Frederick Douglass, two key figures in the history of African Americans. And whereas in 1976, this commemoration of Black history in the United States was expanded to Black History Month. In 1986, President Reagan proclaimed that the foremost purpose of the Black History Month is to make all Americans aware of the struggle for freedom and equal opportunity. And whereas in 1994 and 2002, the Florida Legislature passed legislation to ensure that African and African American history content is taught in schools. The St. Lucie County School District continues to take the necessary steps towards the infusion of African and African American history curriculum as part of the content taught and studied in pre-K through grade 12. And whereas the St. Lucie County School District recognizes the significant contributions African Americans have made in our community, state, nation, and the world in education, medicine, art, culture, public service, politics, and human rights. And whereas this year's theme, A Century of Black Life: History and Culture, that chronicles the centrality of African Americans in the making of American history. Confident that their struggles mattered in human history, Black scholars, artists, athletes, and leaders self-consciously use their talents and gave to the world of gifts to change how the world viewed African Americans. The Association for the Study of African American Life and History has selected this theme to mark the centennial celebration of Black History Month. And whereas it is appropriate to call upon our schools and the community to observe this month with programs, activities, and ceremonies and for our school board to recognize and promote these observances district-wide. Now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of St. Lucie County do hereby proclaim February 2015.
Thank you, Mrs. Floyd. I recommend the board adopt the proclamation designating the month of February 2015 as National African American History Month.
Superintendent recommends that the board adopts the proclamation. May I have a motion, please?
Second.
So moved by Ms. Hinsley and second by Mr. Ingersoll. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, and thank you to the two of you for this focus. And to our board and to our public, a reminder that African American studies are infused in all of our content areas throughout the entire year. Although this proclamation focuses on a single month, we make certain that we make connections for all of our children throughout the entire year. As we move forward, special thanks and recognition, STAR. Ms. Michelle Derger, if you'll come forward at this time for our presentation.
Good evening. Tonight, I am so pleased to bring to you our STAR recipient. STAR stands for Special Thanks and Recognition. Employees are recommended for this by either administration, staff members, community members, or business partners. They do this by either sending emails or sending me a letter telling me about the person they want to recognize. Tonight, our STAR recipient is Barbara Ricks. Barbara Ricks is the business education teacher at St. Lucie West K-8. But that's not all she does. No, Ms. Ricks is one dedicated teacher and employee of St. Lucie County Public Schools. Let me tell you just a little bit about her. She is the business partner coordinator. She's on the school advisory council. She's on the district advisory council. She is the STEM team coach at St. Lucie West K-8. She is the FBLA advisor. She is the facilitator for Title I tutoring. She is the STEM rap battle coordinator and the former MLK community coordinator. Ms. Ricks has done all of these activities while she was completing her MBA and working on her ed leadership degrees. She embodies what it means to be a lifelong learner. To say that she is a hard worker is an understatement. She is always cheerful. She's always kind, supportive, and shows leadership daily. Tonight, we recognize Barbara Ricks for her untiring commitment to St. Lucie West K-8 and their students.
Thank you to Ms. Ricks and the continued impact she makes on the students of St. Lucie County.
At this time, we will now have our CTA report. Mrs. Silman, we welcome you to the podium this evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, Superintendent Yost, and to all of you. First of all, I would say have a happy early Valentine Day. Thank you for having me read on. This morning, I had the opportunity to attend the board workshop meeting. And at the meeting, we had several staff members who gave reports to us. And one of them, I'm just gonna name a few. I had written all my good stuff out of technology. Guess what? I erased it all. Okay, so I'm gonna have to go from memory as to what I'm gonna tell you. We talked about recruitment and retention. One of the reports was given. And in the reported, the person, the report said that we had only 20 vacancies that were, I guess, instructional at this point in time unless they were being filled by people who were waiting for certification, something to that nature. However, as I recall earlier, we had 80 positions that were available, that were open some time ago. And I looked at the school board agenda and I'm trying to figure out if we had 80 and we only have 20 now. It didn't indicate that we had hired 60. So maybe I'm just a little puzzled or a little off. I'm not a mathematician. But if you're looking at the school board minutes, you can kind of very easily see I'm trying to figure out, well, how do we hire all these people so quickly and get them in? I pride our district if that happened. But I am concerned with the number of people that we still have in open positions right now and people who are continuing to leave our district. As I've spoken earlier, and I know Ms. Rodriguez has spoken to you also, with the recruitment and retention process, we realize that we're all part of the solution unless we're all part of the problem. We have to work together to make sure we can recruit and retain good, qualified, instructional people that will actually work with our students. And I do look forward to us being able to have that here in St. Lucie County. But like I said, it's a little disheartening to hear 20 positions are open and then previously I heard 80. So I just need somebody to help me understand where all these people are. And in addition to that, we're just advertising for instructional people on a secondary level to deal with some of the testing, knowing that this is an overwhelming task for guidance counselors and coaches, math coaches at this point in time. But I do, what I would like for the board to think about the impact of hiring people five months with school year being out, almost over rather. Timing is everything. The time you do, the time you hire is crucial. I understand the financial impact. I got that picture very clearly. But it is concerning that we're advertising for the secondary instructional people and then on the elementary level too. And those are non-instructural persons, I understand. However, I just need somebody to really explain to me where have these people come from? When the board agenda did not indicate that they had been hired as, you know, and I'm pretty sure you all looked at the agenda too, but I didn't hear the inquiry minds try to figure out where they are and how we get them here. Then in addition to that, as I stated, the testing is an overwhelming nightmare for all of us when it comes to testing, the number of tests our children are having to take, the number of testing hours that is taking our instructional staff to prepare the kids for. It's just a lot at this point in time. However, as we move forward after the recruitment and retention and part of that report also talked about compensation. The stats that we were given when you talk about compensation and where we rank in St. Lucie County among the three counties where our staff, our teachers, instructional staff, because that was pretty much the reference, where they rank financially and where they rank on the average. All that information is great and wonderful. And some of that information came out with the compensation committee. And I also heard that we want to be collaborative in our process. And the board thus far has given the leniency for the committee to make, or the subcommittee to make recommendations as to how we feel the financial piece should flow. And maybe, let me just kind of walk it back a little bit. The subcommittee has met over and over again. In the month of December, we were kind of like, okay, let's wait for the FT numbers to come in and then we'll know where we sit and everything. So, okay. And this is what we told our members. We're gonna wait because we've been working very collaboratively. We gave the letter saying that we were ready to work collaboratively as a subcommittee, as a union, and as a district. That was our intentions. But when we got to our meeting in January, we were told that the board had a different priority. And look, I understand you all are policy makers, but I would have appreciated if the board had allowed the committee to make recommendations as to how they felt some of the priorities were based on what we had heard previously from previous conversations such as high schools going back with the block scheduling because we assured high school people when they went on that block schedule that we will revert back when we saw monies and things that were available. But yet, the board decided to... But yet, the board decided to approve or make a recommendation, approve that we were going to hire the testing people, and I know I'm not saying the correct name because we change titles often, okay? But the ones who actually deal with testing on the secondary level and the high school level. For that to be a priority and for it not to necessarily have a financial impact on the good of everybody and not to negate the fact that this is important. This is important, testing, I understand that, but the time that it's done, I don't think it was a good choice, a good timing for it to be done at this point in time, especially when we just have five months left in school, okay? Five months, you've got to have training, training, and more training. And you're also taking classroom teachers who will probably, classroom teachers have an impact on students, moving them into a non-classroom situation. So I don't know if, I'll put it like this, I don't know if all the players who were in the room that should have been in the room when that decision was made. That's how I feel. And like I said, I know you all are board members. We elect you to be board members. You know your job, you're policymakers, all that's good and fine. But if you expect us to be partners in collaboration, you'd have to allow us to do the job that we have been tasked to do and not do it because you can do it because you're board members, you know? That's what it boils down to. At least, that's what it feels like from where we're sitting in our seats, okay? And I just need to share that with you because financially, impact is near and dear to all of us. We understand what has been said to us earlier. I heard the report about what the district has done when we went through that whole long timeframe without getting any pay. We understand all that. But my members are still struggling. They're trying to have a living wage in a livable time. So I ask you to make sure that you look at things very carefully, make sure, look at the impact and the timing of how we do what we do. I just wish we would look at that very carefully because I have people who are calling me, who are crying, talking about what they cannot do. And I know about the fun balance, I understand all that. It's good to have a fun balance, but if you have people who can't pay their bills, that's a sad place to be too. So we have to consider that because whereas you and I may not be at the point of struggling other people are, some people are, and they look at that because it's near and dear. We have some people who make $17,000 or less a year. That's a hard pill to swallow when you have a selected group that appeared to be getting others done. So I encourage and would just like to ask the board, please consider that. When any of you go into executive session to look at the financial piece, because when you're told there's nothing left, it's really disheartening, okay? So I thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Tillman, for your report. It has been noted. Is there a CWA report? Okay, no report for CWA, so we'll move right along. We do have a scheduled speaker. No, a couple of scheduled speakers. Mrs. Rodriguez and Mr. Madison, would you please come to the podium at this time? You have been given five minutes to present the presentation, and Attorney Hale will keep time for us. And good evening to both of you and welcome to the podium.
We've come up to address the employment, retention, and recruitment policies and hopefully have ways to improve it. Our county has entered into a vicious cycle. Low salary benefits has hurt our prospective employees and current employees with dissatisfaction that ends up with problems with recruitment and retention. When we have a high turnover, that drives the average salary lower, which hurts with retention again. So we've kind of ended up in this vicious cycle where the turnover has hurt very badly in this county. We have three steps to help increase retention and recruitment in the county. Provide a respectable living wage to all employees. Pay the health of all employees by providing affordable health benefits and treat all employees with professionalism and integrity. So for a living wage, I like to compare teacher salaries. I've heard that there's been some other numbers spread around, but when you look at it, when you adjust the teacher salaries by cost of living by county, our county ranks 55th. Total salary increases over the last decade is less than 10%. That ranks 59th. We need more help with salaries.
So we just checked the Skyward about the jobs that are open at this point, and we just ask you to ask your employees why there are 102 teaching positions and 35 clerical positions currently opening, and what is the plan to fill these 137 positions? Most of these positions, and many of them have gone unfilled for six months.
Okay, the next is regarding the health of all employees. As you guys know, that the health of employees helps with employee production. When so many employees are struggling, especially our CU unit where the healthcare increases, where the school board decided to pass 100% of healthcare increases this year onto those employees, 50, 60 bucks a month hurts them extremely. Some of them are now taking home less money than they were in January of 2014.
So we'd like the board to please ask their employees, what can the district do now so it can be more competitive with insurance with these surrounding counties?
Okay, treating all employees with professionalism and integrity. When we see consultants being paid more than our superintendent and deputy superintendent combined, when we see a priority on hiring another area superintendent like is on the agenda tonight, then we are seeing that we are, despite the claims of teachers being the, improving compensation as a top benefit for our employees, we don't see that at all.
So we would like the board to please ask their employees, when will employee compensation be put ahead of new positions and promotions? Why is the austerity measures and caution of the board seem to be only directed at those employees on the ground?
Okay, not cutting benefits does not mean increasing compensation. Moving money from benefits to salary does not equal increasing compensation. You have to look at it as a balancing act. Taking stuff from one salary, sorry. When you take money from benefits into salary and move it into salary, that does not change the scales. We've been told that we got a raise this year because we renewed some benefits. Not taking away benefits does not increase compensation. If you take away benefits, it lowers compensation.
So now we'd like you to ask your employees to acknowledge that only when money is added to a salary and benefits package that compensation is increased. Today, you were told that you've done a heck of a job with salaries, but we're asking, why are so many employees leaving?
Okay, so I reviewed some of the budgets to check the budgeting at the beginning of the year compared to the end of the year. For example, instruction. Every year, the instructional budget gets spent $11 million less or more than what is originally budgeted than what's at the final end of the year. Over $11 million. So what the board is approving at the beginning of the year disappears by the end of the year.
Okay, we've come to
Thank you very much.
...the limit of our time. We appreciate, we've taken note of everything that's been said and done.
Thank you.
Thank you also, Mr. Matthew?
Madison.
Madison, okay. Okay, at this time, we're going to move right directly into our consent agenda. Fellow board members, we have the agenda before us. I would entertain a motion at this time to accept the agenda as presented. So moved by Ms. Harley, second by Mr. Ingersoll, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Board members, we have the agenda before us. Are there any conflicts that you need to declare on any of the items that are coming before us this evening? Hearing none. Madam Superintendent, your recommendation, please.
Yes, ma'am. I recommend the board approve a total of 23 consent agenda items, beginning with 8.1 and ending with 12.3 as presented.
Board members, we have received the superintendent's recommendations. Are there any items you wish to comment on?
I wish to pull for a separate vote.
Okay.
11.2.
11.2, Mr. Ingersoll was pulling for separate vote. Are there any other, any items from anyone else you wish to pull or discuss? Okay, we have pulled item 11.2 for discussion and separate vote. Superintendent Yost, may we have your recommendation on the remaining items?
Yes, ma'am. I recommend the approval of items 8.1 through 11.1 and 11.3 through 12.3.
May I hear a motion, please? So moved by Ms. Hensley and second by Mr. Ingersoll. Mr. Ingersoll, the floor is open for discussion and therefore separate vote on item 11.2. Okay, may I have a vote on the items, the remaining items, please? Motion?
Very high motion, second.
Okay.
All in favor.
All in favor. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Okay, at this time, we open up the floor for discussion.
Yes, ma'am. 11.2 is job description, chief academic officer. And after hearing the union, I hear what you're saying, but for the purpose of this vote is totally in a different direction. I just want to make sure that that's clear. And the analogy that I wanted to use, I've got two analogies. I started thinking about this this afternoon. If we had a football team coming into it and you wanted to hire a new coach, you would let him pick those players. And I'm saying this because we're in the middle of a superintendent search. I wouldn't want to go out advertising or changing positions. I would want it to keep status quo until the new superintendent, he or she, had an opportunity to come in and look to see how the organization was structured and how the organization was run. And that's just my personal opinion. And I think I also saw this with Steve Jobs. When Steve Jobs took over Apple, he had the leadership there and then he made the choices he made and brought in the leaders that he wanted to bring in. It's almost like when Mr. Lanning came too, he brought in a PIO, he brought in an academic officer, and he also brought in a curriculum specialist too, after he got used to the system and wanted to make changes. And my thought is, is we've already made some changes last year, and I would just hate to see the system keep on making changes that we would need some continuity. And that's my opinion. And board members, whatever we choose to do, I will support that direction. But of course, I always have to say my opinion and my feeling just because that's just the way that I am.
Any further discussion?
Just a reminder that this is voting on a job description and not that it will be advertised at any point in the near future. That it's part of the opportunities that are available as we would see fit.
Okay, no further discussion on the item. Let's bring it
I would like to recommend approval of item 11.2 as presented on the consent agenda.
Okay, board members, you heard the recommendation. So moved by Ms. Hilton and second by Ms. So moved by who?
Hensley.
Hensley, okay. And second by Hilton. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Motion carries 3-2. Okay, other business. Board members, we now have come before us our other business, that stipulation findings of fact, conclusions of law and penalty, and final orders for number 488 through 500. Madam Superintendent, your recommendations.
Yes, ma'am. I recommend the board approve stipulated findings of fact, conclusions of law and penalty, and final orders 488 through 500 as presented.
Thank you. Board members and superintendent, recommendation is before us. May I have a motion? So moved
Second.
So moved by Ms. Harley, second by Mr. Ingersoll, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. We also have before us a final order of expulsion for case number 15-001-NMP as presented. Madam Superintendent, your recommendations first.
I recommend the board approve final order of expulsion for case number 15-001-NMP.
Thank you. Board members, superintendent recommendation is before us. Moved by Ms. Hensley, second by Mr. Ingersoll, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion then carry 5-0. Madam Superintendent, it's time for an update.
It is. Thank you so much. On the consent agenda this evening, we had the appointment of Principal Letty Richardson at Performance-Based Preparatory Academy. So we congratulate Ms. Richardson, joining us as the principal at that site. We'd like to ask her to come forward and share a few words at this time.
Madam Chairman, Dr. Mills, board members, and Superintendent Yost. I would like to begin by thanking our superintendent, Mrs. Janelle Yost, my immediate supervisor, Dr. Helen Wild, and the board members for recognizing the achievement of the Performance-Based Preparatory Academy family. I give a heartfelt thank you to Mrs. Vicky Seymour and all of the instructors who work so tirelessly to meet the needs of our students each day. My deepest thanks goes to my husband, Aaron, my sons, Ron and Von Tavious, my mom, Addie Bennett, my brother, Grant, the community of current and former students, their parents, all of my coworkers and friends who have supported me throughout my career in St. Lucie County. I thank you for your unwavering respect and your dedication to all of the youth in this community. I look forward to continuing this prosperous relationship that we have built over the years. My commitment to you is that the only thing that will change tonight is my title. Mrs. Richardson, the door is still open, and I welcome your thoughts, concerns, and feedback. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. I believe you have family members in the audience if they could stand at this time. Your support will be needed on an ongoing basis as Letty assumes this role. Also wanted to provide a comment regarding the academic and performing arts competition and activity that's been going on for the last few weeks. It has truly been abundant. We've had solo and ensemble competition at the middle and high school levels, Project Citizen, our STEM Fair, the Regional Science or STEM Awards Evening, Middle School Science Bowl, and on and on, and there's more to come. Our students truly are talented in Our students truly are talented in St. Lucie County, and we look forward to ongoing competition. In fact, on Saturday afternoon, it was really exciting to attend the middle school science bowl, where two teams from the same school, Forest Grove Middle School, were our two finalists. And so as they battled it out and only one winner came to the top, it was evident that a lot of hard work, sweat, and tears had been put into the preparation for that science bowl. And I know that occurs at every location within our district in order to help our students shine. So thank you for that, and we applaud our students on their accomplishments. Saturday morning, several of us attended the SHINE Professional Development um, session at Sam Gaines Academy. In fact, we had one hundred and seventy first and second year teachers in attendance. I want to thank the board members who were present and all of our staff members, especially from the curriculum and instruction department, who made that day such a fabulous success. We do not compensate our teachers for their, at their hourly rate of pay. We provide them with a breakfast and a lunch, and they come prepared to learn. And there was such an energy um, at that site, and the individuals who participated surely were looking forward to the support that they received and know that it will continue. In closing, I'd like to indicate that I think it's a wonderful day um, as an administrator, when you're able to interact with students. That is just, my passion is to interact with students, and today, I was doubly blessed, beginning with learning lunches at noon time, and we had students and staff from Weatherby Elementary, Palm Point, uh, Southport, C.A. Moore, Windmill Point, and Lakewood Park Elementary in attendance. And the students are such a joy to interact with as they tell you what they truly like and some of the things they'd like to change um, within their schools. Followed by a visit to um, Lawnwood Elementary, where I went on a bear hunt with the pre-K class, Mrs. Brandifino. And what an adventure it was to walk with those little pre-K babies. And so it was a great day. And I know that as you step out and visit our schools, um, you can see more and more activities that certainly reinforce the standards being offered there. Um, there's lots of learning occurring in our schools, so thank you.
Thank you for that wonderful report, Superintendent Yost. Appreciate it. We don't have to say as much because you covered a lot of it, so that's great. Uh, at this time, Attorney Harold, do you have an update or report? Okay. Uh, board members, report. We're going to begin with Ms. Hensley tonight.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There's some exciting things going on in our community. One of those would be the long-range plan for transportation in which everybody in the community can get on the web and put some information in there. We are trying to create a comprehensive county-wide system so that everybody has opportunity to get to wherever they need to be. Also in our community, because of our dynamic economic development and our aggressive Chamber of Commerce, um, VGTI has a new um, partnership with Karolinska Institute from Sweden. That is, the organization actually does the Nobel Prizes for Science and Mathematics, and they volunteered, uh, going down to the reception to greet these kind of overachievers or medical doctors as well as PhDs and researchers that moved here from Sweden. Uh, they have asked to be involved within the school system because of what they've heard about what's going on in our system. So of course, they have cards now so they can actually get actively involved. And I thought that was quite a, a wonderful thing because obviously, other people from VGTI have been talking about our kids. Also, uh, we talk about STEAM and sort of STEM, and one of my favorite theoretical astrophysicists is Neil deGrasse Tyson. I'm sure everybody has a favorite astrophysicist, right? So, uh, anyhow, his comment was that the arts are extremely important when you're dealing with math and science. And there's a big article in The Post regarding that, that he believes in STEAM. It's so nice to have someone who's so internationally known agree with our state of philosophy. Also, in the National Geographic, which I found was interesting for what National Geographic really does as a rule, they have a very large article regarding the first year and brain development and what happens in a child's brain when it's nurtured, or what happens with a child's brain when it is not. It's a very fascinating article, and it is something that those of us who've been working in pre-K and early learning coalition for a long time really appreciate seeing in print with graphs and charts and statistics. It gives more credibility to our, our push towards the, the whole child starting at zero. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Hensley. Uh, Ms. Hilson?
I just wanted to also speak about SHINE and to thank our team, curriculum and assessment people. What an amazing training that was. Dr. Mills and myself went from room to room and, and sat and really got to interact with the new teachers, and it was just fascinating. And I got myself so caught up in it. She was a great timekeeper because if Dawn had moved us along, I would have just stayed in one classroom because I was just mesmerized and talking, the opportunity to talk to these, all these new teachers, I was just, just overwhelmed. Anyway, but I, I really enjoyed that, and I plan to go to the next one when it, when it does become available. Um, I wanted to also mention Hello Dolly in Port St. Lucie High School and Patrick Madden. How fascinating and how incredible that man. We all know he's a musical genius, but literally, I went Sunday and there was standing room only. They had to pull chairs and bring them um, into the facility because there were so many people still trying to get in. Um, what a gem. You know, the, the arts are alive and well in St. Lucie County, and this is very, very near and dear to my heart to see the amount of people turning out. And it was all ages. It wasn't just, it was young, older, and I think I saw one of the board member's daughters on stage, Mr. Ingersoll. Uh, yes, very involved in the arts, so.
Arts.
So I had the training Saturday. I also did early childhood training all day Friday, and one thing that Ms. Hensley just spoke about is something on the cutting edge called epigenetics. And while it's so fascinating to me, we always say as educators, nature nurture. Well, now there's new evidence that we can actually kind of bend the genetics with children in our care. And how overwhelming is that, that we can actually change um, the children in such a way by what we do in nurturing? You know, we have certain children that come to us that need that extra nurturing, and we take all children. So I, I was just enthralled with this epigenetics because it means as educators, we have an opportunity to actually really shape children that we didn't realize years ago that they were just genetically predisposed and we just had to do the best we can do. And now we know we can actually do so much more. So as educators, I, I just find that fascinating and, and a heavy lift, I'll tell you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hilson, Ms. Uh, Holly. Okay, no report. Mr. Ingersoll?
I too want to thank uh, the teacher recruitment and helping first-year teachers out. I wasn't able to sit through classes. I came for my favorite part, and that was lunch. But it was great to sit and talk to, to teachers.
Okay, I want to make announcement for our history fair judging that's going to take place at Palm Point Research School at Tradition. Uh, it will take place on February the twenty-first, uh, from eight AM to three thirty PM. Uh, that evening, I believe we also have the Night of Stars, and uh, that's a big celebration to honor all of our educators and support staff and the tremendous work that they've done. And they have been selected from their different schools to represent uh, that night, and we are looking forward uh, to that and to the, who's going to be the district winners on that day. Um, also, I want to give a little update on the superintendent's search. Uh, the interviews, as most of us already know, will be held on the eighteenth and the nineteenth. Our uh, candidates will be here uh, on those days, and we'll put in a twelve-hour day. Uh, they will begin by going around to some selected schools that we have to give them a tour, and then uh, the rest of the day will be interviews for them. Uh, they will answer questions from the board, from the union, and from the executive council on those days. Uh, we currently have uh, four candidates. One of them have, has withdrawn. His reasoning is because he wants to stay closer to home. He's from Ohio, and that's John Stanford. He's decided that he wants to um, pursue opportunities in Ohio, so he has withdrawn. So we have the four candidates that will be interviewed. Uh, starting at five thirty in the evening, the public will have an opportunity to come meet the candidates as well as interview uh, the candidates. So the public will have the opportunity to do interviews. So we encourage the public, St. Lucie County, come out, pack the house out, let the superintendents, uh, the applicants know that we are all behind getting the one that we think will um, be best for us as a whole. Uh, that is at five thirty in the evening. We will start five thirty on, on sharp. So please be here at that time, get your questions together so that you'll be ready to ask the questions that concern you. Uh, the board will then gather as much information as possible before making a final decision. And then everyone participating in the interviews and attending the sessions will have an opportunity to fill out a questionnaire in which they can ask questions. Uh, they can make comments and they can choose a candidate. As soon as the forms are filled out, we will have them collected, and the data input and a spreadsheet will be produced for the board's use. Teachers, parents, anyone and everyone in the community have, will have a chance to participate in this process. So please spread the word, everyone that's here, those that hear us um, on, on the air, spread the word, five thirty on the eighteenth, be here. Uh, the board is shooting for March first as a deadline, and our successful candidate will be expected to work, start work hopefully uh, by July first. Okay, we will now bid goodnight to our viewing audience, and uh, we will call our unscheduled speaker up to the podium.